Our dear heavenly father, we're so grateful for this opportunity to meet together as elected officials and staff for the city to discuss the needs and of the city and what we can do to best support our residents and staff and the operations. Please look over our staff and keep them safe as they do their duties and help them be able to return home safely to their families. We're thankful for the opportunity to live in a land with freedoms and opportunity and please help us to be able to be guided to make the best decisions that we can and to do it with respect and kindness. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilor Hanson. Seeing no members of the public, we will move on from public comment onto presentations or reports. For the mayor's report, I have a couple of things. Thanks to those that made the effort to go down to the Utah League of Cities in Town training. There were some good sessions there. One of them was about conducting good meetings and that's where I realized most cities do have a work session. There was a really good one about emergency preparedness and the North Ogden Fire that really just blew my mind. The things that they dealt with, their communication, their internet, they didn't have it. I just can't believe the things they dealt with. So we need to have a pretty serious meeting and maybe even involve their guy. I did, another thing on the agenda that some of the meetings have is an upcoming events section that I would really like to make a standing item on ours because I feel like sometimes we miss a few things. Oh, okay, cool. I would like to see them printed if I could, if we could, like Veterans Day program, November 11th, just, just so, because I forget. And I'm sure everybody probably misses them occasionally, like actual printed things that are upcoming in the next, say, month. I think that'd be helpful for us. Thank you for adding that, though. We've got the combined city council meeting on there. You know, we have the election, the Trader Joe's thing. There's just things that are coming that I don't ever want to forget to tell these, these guys and make sure everybody's up to date on what we're thinking. And so along with that, we do have our Veterans Day program on November 11th. We're working on that and we're excited for that. We do have the Trader Joe's on Friday morning at 8:30, 8:45. It's going to be very quick, but you know, it's going to be a big deal. It's probably something that would be neat for us to attend, so we'll go support them. We do have a meeting with UDOT tomorrow concerning the bridges over 4,400. It will be very interesting to see what they say tomorrow. And I have, well, we'll just leave it at that. I'll let you know what we find out. And with that, we'll move on to the city administration report. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. You guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. Department heads' reports are all in your packet. Does anybody have any questions concerning any of, any of those or any items that might be listed on those? I'm not exact, I think most of them are there tonight, most department heads, if you had any. I did notice in, and if, I'm pretty sure Sean's there, he might be able to answer this because I didn't know the answer, but there was a big drop in both the commercial and residential water and sewer usage. The water obviously is pretty self-explanatory, but I wasn't sure why there was such a drop in the sewer usage. I don't know if any of you noticed that or if you really were concerned about it, but I don't know if Sean could give us a little update on why that would drop so drastically at this time of the year?
I don't think the sewer would have dropped, as far as I was aware.
Maybe I misread that wrong. It just, it, there were two different charts on that graph and it showed both of them dropping quite a bit. That's what surprised me a little bit because I thought I read one in that index that it was sewer, but maybe I just read it wrong.
Our water usage definitely drops in September goes on and then into October, we definitely start taking a decline on that. But sewer is based on just a monthly fee, so other than the commercial, and it's based on usage in December, January, and February, so it shouldn't have changed much either. So they should, them should be pretty consistent. I'd have to ask Cody on that.
That's why I was surprised by that because I knew sewer is pretty consistent. That's not going to change that much, but either way. October anniversaries, we didn't have any for their anniversary dates. We did have a couple of known there. Kristen with the fire department has 21 years. We wanted to give a shout out to her. The other, the others were a little bit smaller. John Flynn with Sean's department has seven. And Amy with one of our desk persons with four. And Nikki, I actually hired Nick Decourt and spent four years, kind of blows my mind that it's gone that fast, but kudos to all them. Our staffing authorization, if you noticed that, we're pretty well-staffed. We're in probably as good a shape as we've been for a long time. We are still down in both police and fire, but I know those are both moving forward. So one of these days we'll bring that into you and we'll be fully staffed. So that would be a good development. Next, we had our community development report. I'll just turn a little bit of time over to Brandon, just update us on any of those things.
Sure. Mayor mentioned the Trader Joe's grand opening tomorrow, so we hope to see y'all there. Thanks for all of.
It's Friday?
Friday. Friday at 8:45. Thanks for all of you who went to the Honey Baked Ham grand opening. That was packed, small space, packed, and Steve's very excited about the years worth of free sandwiches he won.
That's right.
Yeah. And then you probably noticed on the report, there's a new addition with the Nothing Bunt Cake. That's in the strip center between Super Chicks and Starbucks, so we'll see them open in a couple of months. We are getting a new golf simulator over Freeway Park Drive where the old hobby store used to be. That's not on the report either, but that is under construction right now.
Like the RC adrenaline hobbies? Okay. So they're gone?
Yep. COVID, or not COVID, but construction probably killed them.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
Brandon, you might want to mention the Larry H. Miller sale. I don't know how many of them are aware of that.
That's right. So the Larry H. Miller Jeep sold to Young Automotive, so they're now branded as Young. It wasn't really Larry Miller. Larry Miller Corporate sold to a company out of Georgia for a bazillion dollars a few years ago, but they kept that name for that store for some reason. And now they're selling just that store off.
So they went up on.
Mm-hmm. On the, yep, on the hill.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just, I'll just wrap that up. On the upcoming events, I just made a couple notations myself. Some of these I think were hit, obviously, but the fall cleaning, again, October 27th to 28th, and Rich's got his Halloween party on the 27th as well. And then the final thing, we did need to discuss that joint meeting with the planning commission and also just to point out that our first meeting in November will be on the 5th because the 4th is Election Day. So just a reminder of all that. So I don't know if you want to discuss that about planning commission. I think Brandon has reached out to the planning committee. I don't know what feedback we got from them, but we usually do this in the fall where we have a joint meeting with both of them and we can do a little bit of training that night. So we may want to discuss that a little bit and just give us some ideas of what works best for the city council and then we can bounce that back off the planning commission. But other than that, that's all I had on my list to discuss.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Counselor Austin.
Ms. Maricone, could you bring up the, from the packet, the average utility fees thing? That's, that's what he was talking about. The commercial average user fees. Last year it was level the entire time and this year it went down this month. And that, that's what I think Steve was wondering about. Page eight.
Here we go. That was it. Second one, that one. Oh, no. Up one, sorry.
Yeah, that one's, yeah, this one there with the red line, it just went down. And that was what I think Steve was asking about.
Yeah, that was it.
If, if you could look into it and just give us a, an idea of why it went down, given the fact that last year's was level.
Yeah, it should be pretty consistent. The way we charge on that, it should be, so it might have just been a typo or something that was put in an error. I'll, I'll get with Cody on it and see what happened there.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brooks, you're going to figure that out.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah. As far as the combined meeting, do we want to have a discussion right now about what we, what we want to do? What is the planning commission feedback been? As you've spoken with them, have they given you any feedback or?
Yeah, they're new to this as well, most of them. And so I think what we're interested in as a commission is to discuss a couple of things. The new concepts that is, that are coming from Wasatch Front Regional Council around centers. I think that's a big deal. That's being integrated into the new moderate income housing plan changes that will be forthcoming. So that will be a big deal. We could do some legal training as well, based on making certain types of motions and the language around motions. We've, we've discussed that with the commission already. So that would be good, I think jointly to do. And then we can talk about potential projects coming forward in terms of what the vision is for the city string town being one of them. It would be nice to have the commission and the, and the, and the council confer together on some of those big ideas. One of the things that the commission has always been concerned about is being out of step with the council, making recommendations to the council that may then get rejected or denied by the council. And so as much as we can come together, especially on the strategy portions, I think that's going to be very efficient for us.
Okay. Do you guys want to, we, we have a meeting scheduled for the 18th of November or the 5th, which is the Wednesday. Would, would, after this meeting work to have them come in? I hate to get us over here another night if possible. Like I don't want to make you guys come on a Thursday or something, but what, what are you guys thinking? What works for you? What are you thinking?
I think the commission has generally expressed some flexibility, so they take your lead on that.
I don't believe it.
Okay.
I mean, if we had a limited agenda, that would help.
Yeah.
We definitely want an agenda and we'd want you to have that well in advance so you can come prepared to have a productive conversation. And we'd have some presentations and some slides and things to look at.
And the council.
And hopefully the council will be limited, yeah.
If it's, if we're going to do it after.
Yeah. If we're going to do it after, hopefully we can really limit the council meeting to a short meeting and then, and then jump into that. Do you guys have a preference on the 5th or the 18th? Do you have any sense of what's coming the next, what is that, two weeks from now?
For the council?
For, for the council meetings. I mean, do we have any big agendas coming?
We may be presenting to you the rezone that was already heard by the commission for the council's recommendation for the land behind Krispy Kreme. That's the, the biggest thing that we have from the commission.
Do you think that'll happen on the 5th or the 18th?
Depending on when it's ready, it could be either one.
Okay.
The target is the, latest is the 18th.
We'll have the canvas on the 18th, too.
Oh, for the election. That doesn't take very long though, does it? No. If you want to just do the 18th and we'll just plan on.
Let's go to court.
Yeah, let's, we have a court battle, yeah. Okay. Is everybody okay if we just do the 18th and we'll just plan on camping out here that night? So, okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's plan on it. Let's get that agenda together. Thank you.
Shell, you bringing treats?
Bring treats.
Yes.
Find dinner.
She understands the assignment. That's good. Okay. All right, Mr. Brooks, anything else?
No, nothing further, Mayor, for me.
Thank you.
Just one final thing, and I know, I know we didn't have a meeting last cycle, the last meeting. It was the end, September 30th was the end of the third quarter. I was kind of hoping to see some budget updates and that, so I didn't see it this time. So I'm just laying it out there. So hopefully maybe next time we can get some updates because I love to see how we ended the quarter, so.
And that'll be the November 5th meeting. So yeah, let's have that.
Thank you.
You got that, Mr. Brooks, for Cody? Mr. Carden?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get it out. We may get it out earlier than that, just so you got time to look at it.
Okay. Thank you. Consent items. Number one, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the September 16th, 2025 council work session and council meeting. Any changes or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order?
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
A second?
Motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We'll move into action items. Number one, consideration of resolution 2025-33 amending the Riverdale Consolidated Fee Schedule to Include Letter of Agency Signs for Purchase by Property Owners and to Update and Clarify Commercial Sewer Rates. Chief Warren and Sean Douglas.
Just to give you an update, letter of agency signs are something we've been doing for a couple of years now. It used to be just a letter, but we've now created a sign over the last little bit. We were getting some good participation from some of the businesses, having them go purchase them themselves. But a lot of times getting people to go purchase them themselves and then get them up has been a struggle. So we're proposing that we add it to the fee schedule. We'd purchase a bulk of signs that would get us a little bit discounted price and then we would sell them directly to the businesses for them to sign, hopefully facilitating that and getting those signs up and more of the businesses, which will help keep our city safer and cleaner. So is there any questions on that?
No. I like it.
Great. Thank you.
So our part was just a missed item on the consolidated fee schedule. We did approve that rate in the budget meetings that we had previously. We just missed it on the fee schedule. We also, when we was looking at it, it's, it wasn't very clear in there on how we charged. And so we went back and kind of put in like we charged for the water and gave some clarification so that it's more transparent. If anybody has a question, they know why they're being charged for what. And it also moved the charge over on the line items where all the other charges are. And if you have any questions, I can try and answer them.
All right. Any questions? Counselor Arnold?
Move to approve resolution 2025-33 as stated within the packet.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Ms. Maricone, will you please pull the council?
Counselor House?
Yes.
Counselor Richter?
Yes.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Item number two, discussion and action regarding rebranding of the senior center building. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. As, as Miranda and I have been looking at a bunch of different options to try to secure some help in funding with the different elements over at the senior center, one of the things that we ran into is some of the grants that might be available to us are looking for a little bit, they don't necessarily want to put their money into a senior center. Just that name itself actually disqualifies us from some of the grants. But in reality, it's, it's kind of a, it's an adult recreation space. We do a lot of our youth programs over the community center and our adult programs are at the senior center for, for a large portion of them. And then recognizing that we do band concerts over there and meet the candidate nights. And on occasion, we've had different, we had a few years ago, somebody come and speak about suicide prevention. It's just, it's a community space that we, that we can utilize. And the idea came about as we're trying to turn over every stone and look at every possible opportunity to secure some funding, secure some help in the operations of that building. One of the things that we identified was if we maybe changed the name to something that's not so descriptive as a senior center, that that might open some doors to apply for some of this other funding. But before we come to the council, we don't really have names identified or anything like that. Before we come to the council, just wanted, or before we bring a final product to the council, just wanted to kind of get your guys' appetite. Is that an idea that you'd be willing to consider as a non-starter? You know, and that's kind of the discussion that we wanted to have tonight.
Okay. Counselor Arnold?
I think it's really appropriate because one of the problems that we do have is the apartments, they're not, they're not senior apartments. They're not subsidized. They're, even if we have them in a 55 or older or something like that, they're not subsidized. So it's, it's inappropriate really to have a senior center with the apartments because it, it leads to assumptions. So I'm, I'm all for it.
I agree. Let's see, Counselor Stevens got, maybe.
No, I.
Counselor Richter?
No, no, I'm just going to echo that. I think that would be an appropriate thing to, to be more descriptive, more accurate description of the facility. So, yeah.
Just play it open. Just.
But I'm, I, I don't like the word adult because it has a double entendre meaning. And so it's like, yeah, you know, Riverdale's adult, you know, center. So anyways, not to be, anyway, you get the point, but it's, it's, I'm, I'm open. I think that's, that's good. I like it. You know, and I, I'm not a real fan of, I don't know. Is, is there an age limit? We have, we posted, is it 55 and above? Is that, is that how we define senior?
So in all reality, it, by policy with the city, we've, we've declared 55 and older for our senior rates and things like that. But in all reality, anybody that walks in that building can partake of the services provided. You know, and that's kind of the point is it's, maybe it's geared towards the 55 and older crowd, but not everything. Obviously the band concerts and the meet the candidates and we use it as a community space. And even during the day, if somebody that is younger than 55 wants to go participate in those activities, they're, they're not going to be turned away.
Counselor, Counselor Hanson, after Counselor Stevens is done.
No, I was just going to say that I've started participating over there on some of the, in the day and, and lunches and I've been, one of the, the things that I've noticed is that there's, there's, okay, seniors in the seventies and eighties year old crowd being taken there by a 40 or 50 year old child. And, and they participate with them and they get, they can have lunch with them. And I'm going, that's fabulous because, you know, not to make them, they're trying to do right for their parents, the senior, and, and bring them there. And I thought, tip my hat to, you know, Miranda was, was, oh, yeah, absolutely, everybody, yeah, you're welcome. But I have seen younger, but they're almost always, my observation, this is anecdotal, is they were accompanying who, people who wanted to be there with their, with the, you know, their generational crowd.
I think Counselor Hawes was ahead of you, Counselor Hanson.
Yeah, I'm right.
When the building was built, it was in, intended to be the Riverdale Senior Center, but the space, the large room there was, was a magnificent facility. I mean, it is a really, really nice space. And I mean, there were talk, there was talk about renting it out as a, for weddings, for anniversary pro, parties and for other kinds of parties. They then put, they then set the rates to rent it out at such a rate that nobody would want to. I mean, and, and it seemed like that was almost kind of the desire at the time that, but I do believe that I, I think that there was at least one or two weddings that were there. And I thought that they were magnificent, the, that, that room is amazing for that kind of a thing. And use, the other uses that we have for it, that we do use it for are, I, I think are, are great. And it, you know, getting more uses out of it for those things. But I also feel that we want to be very considerate about the seniors. I don't want them to think that we're, that we're changing the name because we don't want it to be a senior center anymore. So that's, that's where I would go. I, I, I don't have a problem, you know, making some kind of change in branding, just that we, we might want to be cognizant of making, making sure that the seniors understand that it is still and we intend it to be a senior center for them. But that we're rebranding it for the fact that it is a broader use within the community and that that will allow us to get more funding to help out with all of the programs.
Counselor Hanson?
And I would just second what, what, not Commissioner, Councilmember Hawes said. I feel the same way. And I, I would especially be able to support it, I think, if we did find more ways to use it as more of a community, which I know is tricky staffing wise, but we, it's such a beautiful facility and I know that puts a lot on us, but if we're able to bring in that additional funding because of it, then hopefully we can afford to maintain it even after hours. So if we can find ways either to even engage with city events more often there or find ways to co-mingle senior things a little bit later into the night there to make it more of a broader community event, occasionally like the suicide prevention talk or I would love to be able to go during the senior cell after work rather than having to skip work to go to the senior cell. So I mean, I think there's just a lot of opportunity there and I think that would help if we open ourselves up a little bit, even though it might cause us some more work to have to do that.
Yeah. And I, I just feel the same. Like a lot of these items that end up on our agenda, I, we've talked about them in the city for weeks, but this is brand new to me, too. I feel like it's our most beautiful facility in, in the city and I've always thought it'd be wonderful for weddings and that sort of stuff. I know there's some logistical problems, but yeah, I mean, it, it's got all kinds of amenities. The pottery, does it still have a kiln in a pottery room or? Yeah. There's no, no reason you couldn't just have a, a class, a pottery class and have it in there that's not seniors. It could be kids for all that, you know? You could use it as part of a summer recreation program and we need to be respectful of seniors. I don't want to push them out in any way, but it probably sits empty during certain times. There's just so many different things we could be doing. Yeah, this is a very interesting idea and I'm excited about it. I think it's, I think it's very positive, so.
Yeah, well, and, and as we're having the discussion tonight, I appreciate the feedback and it sounds like it's worth continuing down the path and exploring. I, I had a couple ideas and thoughts and I wanted to, to maybe try to get some direction from the council. Again, we're not discussing specific names. We're not even, I don't have a recommendation that way. But when you look at naming buildings or activity centers or whatever you call it, a lot of times you can, you can name it after the activities and the use that's in the building, right? Or maybe you could name it after, some buildings are named after people. Or sometimes it's just a, it's a pretty name, right? So like we have the community center. You can call it the recreation center, right? We decided to call it the community center. And we have the fire station. That's pretty descriptive of what we do there. If we're looking at names, are there certain things that the council would lean more into? Or like for instance, the idea came up, it was brought to me, it wasn't something that Miranda and I talked about of naming after somebody. How does the council feel about that? Or would you, would you shy away from that? Would you entertain that? Like, anyway, maybe I could get a little guidance there as well tonight.
Counselor Arnold?
I would shy away from naming it after somebody. I think knowing that particular activity or whatever we got going on there, where we headed there. People don't know people in one generation, two generations, whatever. And it's like, you know, I don't, even when a contractor puts in a subdivision and they name the streets after their kids, and I don't know their kids and I don't know what order their kids were in. So I don't know if Chelsea comes after Bobby. I don't know. And so I think it's better to stay just Riverdale's, you know, activity and living center or something, you know? I don't, I keep, I have no care what it is, but.
I, I know it might cause a little bit of confusion. It's always been a little strange to me that we called the rec center the community center. And so that may be a hard thing to shift, but if the rec center became the rec center and the community center became the community event center or something along those lines. I mean, it would be a shift. I don't know how many people really, there's only two buildings, so I'm not sure how confusing that really would be. There could be some with it, but.
And, and we refer to the community center a lot. I'm not sure the residents do. You know what I mean? Like we need to build or call that building something so we all know, but I'm not sure if we change the name, they'd just be like, oh, this is the rec center. Okay, whatever. Half of them probably call it the rec center. Okay, whatever. Half of them probably call it the rec center. We need to know because we know what building we're talking about when we say the community center. So I, yeah, I think you might be able to pull that off. I think something else too. You might just throw it into AI or something.
Well, we, we've got some ideas that we've been kicking around. We're just, we're just not quite there yet, but I just, this helps guide that too.
Yeah, you know. Councillor Stevens.
Stay away, I, I concur with the stay away from, from an individual. However, if you want to be descriptive, which I, I think is helpful as to what you're trying to accomplish, you can also add in a location like the rec center on Parker Drive or, you know, something in that, have that as a descriptive of where it's at. Because sometimes I've heard people get tongue tied between the community center and civic center and interchange that. And so if you put it at, uh, in the descriptive, in the name, the location, anyway.
Like the crossing at seven hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I think I've got great feedback tonight, Mayor. I don't know. I mean, it's your meeting, but.
Any other comments? Yeah, great job, Rich. Like you guys are doing, you're doing everything you can. So that's awesome. Okay, we will move on to the next item, uh, number three, discussion and action, possible action regarding senior center membership fees, lunches and software. Mr. Taylor.
Okay, um, this is, this is kind of another topic that, uh, as we're looking at, uh, having the users of the service help pay for the service, as we're looking at different sources of funding. And, um, we've, we've talked a lot about who's using the senior center, who's using the programs and, and how we do fees and things and put together a little bit of slideshow, slideshow on this one. It's not, uh, Mr. Cooper level, but, um, hopefully it'll help set the table for, for the discussion and kind of the direction that we're headed. And then just wanted to get some feedback from the council before we really dial it in. So if you flip the slide there, some of the, the considerations that we've, we've taken is we're pretty limited on staffing over there. So any kind of fee that we institute, we've got to figure out a way that we can, we can manage that through staffing. The, the users, a lot of them have technology barriers, um, and, and that can be difficult for them. Then we have people coming from all over the, the county and, and all over northern Utah to, to use the, the facility. So we want to, to make sure that we're charging it, uh, fairly, I guess, um, looking at maybe a resident, non-resident type of pricing, just because of the geographic diversity of people. And then we also want to be considerate of the seniors and the customers that are on fixed incomes. So these are kind of some of the things that we've been thinking about before we even get into any kind of fee idea of, of just trying to, uh, deal with what we have. We, we're not going to come forth and, and ask for extra staffing so that we can implement a fee. So as we're going through this, just to kind of keep those things in mind. So what we've looked at is we have, our lunch program is our biggest activity, um, but we have a bunch of other activities as well. If you look at the, the usage and the numbers, lunch is a little over half of the visits to the senior center involves a, a transaction at lunch. And specifically, I was asked to look at a resident, non-resident fee on a lunch. We served about eighteen thousand lunches last year. So that would be putting a fee on eighteen thousand transactions. And due to some of the staffing constraints and some of the technology barriers that the, the users have, eighteen thousand transactions is a little scary to me to try to, um, do them in a different way. And so we've kind of migrated to this membership fee idea. And that's kind of what I wanted to discuss with the council tonight, where we would have two different fees, uh, uh, a yearly fee and a monthly fee. That would greatly reduce the number of transactions that we do. Here in a minute, we'll have a, a slide describing how many users that we have. But it would be under a thousand transactions if everybody did a yearly fee. Obviously, if, if they did a monthly fee, it would be more frequent. But again, it's only once a month versus every day. And then we would have separate prices on a resident, non-resident price. If you'll flip to the next one, Michelle. Again, we have limited, um, employees to facilitate sales. Now, we implemented two years ago, a structure at the scene, uh, the community center where, um, we, we sell our annual passes, we put them on sale once a year. And in doing that, we've kind of flipped the whole math equation. I know exactly when we're going to sell month passes or year passes, because it's the month that we have them on sale. We sold three yearly passes before we put them on sale in the whole year, the year prior. I just pulled my numbers. We've, we've sold a hundred and eighty this year. Our month pass users has gone way down. We're hardly selling any month passes. People are buying the year passes because they go on sale. And then all of our renewals come at the same time as well because it's a year pass. And so by, what we would like to propose is a fee structure where we have a discount on the yearly passes once a year, where we can staff an extra person over the senior center for a period of time, anticipating a lot of transactions, getting those transactions, taking care of that one time a year. That could help with some of our staffing constraints. Um, it's a model that we're using over the community center and it's been really successful. We use it over the community center as a way to generate additional revenue because obviously the cost of a year pass is more than a month pass. Um, and it's actually helped us generate additional revenue. But one of the other things that it's done is all of our transactions come in a, um, compacted period of time, which over at the senior center would be really attractive because then we can, we know what days we have it on sale and those are the days that we can add additional staffing over there. So if you want to flip one more, Michelle, this just talks about, we've been tracking, uh, membership at the senior center, uh, for about two years now. We have two hundred and twenty-three residents who are members. We give away memberships for free right now. We have five hundred and fifty-four non-residents that are members. So any fee that we implement would involve, potentially people would stop coming. I mean, there would be some that, that don't come any longer, but when we're looking at a dollar amount on a fee, you're looking at, you know, about a little less than eight hundred people who could potentially be part of that. We, I don't have any dollar amounts for you tonight. And another thing too, as far as strategically, we, we kind of want to start low. And just get it on the books, see how it's working, see how it impacts our attendance numbers and things like that. And then we can, um, adjust it as we need, rather than coming in pretty high and driving people away. Again, that's part of the compassion thing where they're on fixed incomes, things like that. So, um, I'll just throw this out there. The other senior centers in Weber County, they do a five dollar a month membership fee. They don't do any yearly or anything like that, but so that's just context on, um, what the other centers around us are doing. And then there might be one or two more slides.
Refresh me, what does a membership get you?
So it would be access to the building and access to the programs and services.
Okay, and it, that's separate from the, from the dinner?
Yes.
So a person can still come to the dinner, pay the, or the lunch price and not be a member?
Well, so, so the lunch is an activity in the building. So in order to gain access to activity, we would want you to be a member. And, and, and so that's why we're looking at the, the membership versus a lunch transaction or adding in resident, non-resident on every transaction, because one individual might have three different transactions that day. They might buy lunch and they might go attend a couple of different classes. Where if we get them on a membership, we get them one time when they first come in the door and it goes to everybody. Rather than us, uh, like if we just did the lunch program, we'd be missing almost half our people because they're not eating lunch, but they're coming to play cards or they're coming to do lapidary or ceramics or whatever. So the membership thing, another reason why we, we're looking at this is it gets everybody instead of just focusing on the one program.
Councillor Hanson.
I like that and I like the selling it because I think there's a lot of the younger people who take those people who would buy it as like a Christmas gift. So even if it is kind of a big financial hit for people that are on limited incomes, if there's people who'd be willing to help them with it, you know, as a gift so that they can attend when they want to attend. The other thing that I was thinking about and I've been thinking about it for a while is, um, whether or not we would do it similar to what we do with the Roy complex, where maybe we could work out partnerships with other cities that, um, we could offer their, their residents, the resident rate if they cover the other portion of the cost. And that may help us kind of build some goodwill and, and build stronger relationships with some of the surrounding cities on that. But, and I'd be willing to help with that, to try to make contacts and be friends, to make them convinced it's good, but.
That, that's a great idea. I haven't considered that.
Hit, you know?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Cause the cities are not foreign to that, like South Ogden's already paying into the terrace. Uh, Roy is getting money from, I believe, West Haven and maybe Hooper, anyway.
And I think the, I think the participants would probably could even help with some pressure on the cities to be like, I want to go there.
Will you go halfway with me?
Yeah, like help us out and maybe we can make those deals.
And, and it doesn't have to live, I mean, we can do South Weber and, and Dayton, North Davis County. That's a great idea.
Yeah, I like that.
Councillor Hawes, did you have something?
Yeah, so is, is the, um, is this membership fee, would that be replacing the fees for the programs? So I, the big one obviously is the, the, uh, lunch. So.
Yeah, so, so the direction we're headed is the, the membership fee would get you access to the building and then any programs you want to do, you still pay the applicable fee. So currently the lunch fee is four dollars for, for fifty-five and older. It, it's not differentiated between residents and non-residents and we're suggesting that we keep it at the four dollars. If we need to adjust, adjust the lunch price, we can adjust the lunch price. But if we do a resident, non-resident fee on the lunch, that's where my concern comes in because, uh, we don't have staff taking money for lunch. We, it, it just presents a lot of issues. And so we would keep those fees in place. Um, this would just be an additional source of revenue, but it would also potentially, um, we have a ton of people. I mean, you saw the numbers, five hundred and fifty-four that come from outside our city and we could collect a fee on that, that, that we're not currently collecting.
Councillor Stevens.
Okay, help me out on this. If we collect a fee, is it going to be city or RDA?
So this would be a city fee. It, so, uh, when we come to the council, we would, for approval, we would come with a fee schedule change, just like you guys saw tonight, um, but it would be a new fee and we would implement it through that way. I haven't gotten all the way down that road with Cody and, and things like that. We'll probably put it in it, its own revenue GL so we can track it, things like that. But yes, it would be a city fee.
Okay.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I, I like where you're going with this and, and I feel like it's a good idea because it, for me, it's like, I'm surprised that we haven't already been doing it. It, it makes logical sense to me. I like the idea of, of giving a very strong discount to the resident. They're already supporting this with their tax dollars already. So I don't want to double dip them, but, uh, no, this makes complete sense to me.
Well, and, and, and just because of, you know, and, and you guys have come up with some pretty good ideas that we need to go back and think about, and that's why we wanted to have this discussion. But initially we were looking at low fees, like an annual pass that's really pretty low. Just to get it on the books, just to kind of see what it does. And so, but it gives us an avenue to kind of tweak and kind of look at as we want to, to adjust for the services that we're providing over there, frankly.
Okay.
Okay. Any, any other?
Do you have anything else?
Concerns or, I, we're good. Thank you, council.
Okay. All right, we'll, we will move on to the comment section of our meeting. Any comments from the city council? Councillor Hawes.
I have, just have a question. You're, you said that you're meeting with, uh, UDOT this week. They seem to have been very absent recently.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been a few months since they've been here. And I think the last time they were here, they talked about fifty-six hundred and Riverdale Road exit, not our forty-four hundred. They canceled the meeting, the, um, kickoff meeting that they were going to do at, and they have not seemed to have rescheduled it. They are obviously way behind. And so I, I'm just, I'm disappointed, not just in the fact that they're not getting things done, but I'm disappointed in the fact that they're not coming to us as a council and explaining what's going on and what they're doing, what we can, you know, what more we can expect, that kind of stuff. So I would hope that you would, uh, you know, pass along those, uh, feelings to them.
Yeah, thank you. I, I will invite them to our next meeting. Uh, the previous meeting was a little bit hostile. And because it was our first finding out of what was happening and, uh, you know, there was a lot of talk, oh, we'll fix this, we'll fix this. And, and anyway, yeah, we're, we're going to invite them to come now in front of you guys and present in a public meeting exactly what's going on. Because I don't know if their messaging online has kind of dropped any dates and just gotten a little bit vague to their, their announcements or.
Yeah, in fact, the, the most recent, I, I haven't looked at the very most recent email, but one of the prior emails that I saw, um, they don't have the roads set up right. They still have Cozy Dale going where it used to go.
Yeah.
So I think they should fix that.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, we'll talk about that tomorrow.
It's been disappointing.
Yeah, very much so. And, and they, they have, uh, offered to, to maybe sit down with the businesses and we'll, we'll approach that tomorrow too. Because, um, I don't know what they can offer our businesses, but they did offer to work with Mr. Cooper just a little bit and try and facilitate some sort of business meeting to let them know what's going to happen during our Christmas season. But it's going to be so bad. I don't know why the businesses would really want to. I mean, we know what's going to happen. It's not really, they can't offer them much. Councillor Richter.
Twenty minutes it took me to get from, from Roy to like the Sinclair on Riverdale, coming down. And that was just yesterday afternoon, normal day. This is not busy time. Right, there, there, there is no outlet. It's, it's incredible. And when you read their emails, as councillor Hawes just indicated, their due date is, this is expected to continue for several months. And that's it.
And the freeway will be bringing the customers to Trader Joe's. That alone will be thousands of people a day. I, I think it'll be thousands of people every day coming down Riverdale Road and then going back out to the freeways. So yeah, it's a problem. Thanks. What else? Councillor Hanson.
Um, we had talked, it's been a little while ago, um, about adding to the fifteen hundred west sign, maybe a historic name sign to kind of maintain some of our Riverdale history up in that area. I was just thinking about it again now that hopefully when the bridge gets opened up and the roads open, that we, if, if it's something we could put on the agenda or even have, um, I know she's not local anymore, but our historian come and maybe share some information on the names of other roads or some ideas of, you know, that area of what might be some appropriate names, just so that we don't lose it.
Yeah.
Cause I don't know, I like to still see some of our history, even though we've lost it visually, at least there's reminders, you know?
I was in favor of that when she brought it to us. And so, Mr. Brooks, did you get that?
I did, Mayor.
Okay.
We'll, we'll let Jack get that on in future, did it?
Councillor Richter.
I'm sorry, one more. I, I'm wondering if we might be able also to utilize our survey, uh, software that we currently have to.
Yeah.
Cause I understand it's not going to necessarily change the project, but I think it would be an opportunity for our citizens to make comments that we could then share with UDOT as well, use that tool to solicit those, uh, those comments.
Yeah, we can definitely work with that. And, and, and Ms. Maricone, will you maybe reach out to councillor Richter and just see, you know, what you're thinking exactly details wise and then we can go forward from there.
Strong arm you, Doc.
Anybody else? All right, uh, comments from the city staff?
Mayor, the only thing, if I could say something, um, just so everybody's aware, I want to give a thanks to Casey. I've had him working on that, uh, Trader Joe's opening here for a few weeks now. Um, you'll see our case out there in full force, at least for the first little while. We've reached out to all the businesses in the area and as well as the other cities and stuff, just kind of notifying them. And, and we've got a plan all mapped out. Hopefully it all goes well, but you know, we just don't know. We don't know what this crowd's going to be like. We're anticipating for the worst and, and hoping for the best. So, um, you'll see them out there in strong force on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. But thanks to Casey as, as usual, he always does a good job. So I just wanted to thank him publicly before. Maybe I should wait until after Friday and see how it goes, but, uh, I'll do it for now. And, um, just say thanks to him and, and our law enforcement, Sean Skies as well. There'll be a lot of street marquee. There'll be a lot of street markings, uh, no left turns and things like that. So we'll see how it goes. But it'll, it'll be interesting. It'll be a good test for our guys. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thanks. Yeah, I've heard they've talked to R.C. Willie about possible parking and the church and all kinds of stuff. So, yeah.
This, this is going to make raising the chains look like.
It is going to make it look.
Okay, I was on the planning commission when, um, In-N-Out Burger opened. And one of the things that the, from In-N-Out, um, presented, he says, when an In-N-Out goes in, the businesses immediately around it have a fifteen percent minimum increase of, of business in, in their, in their activities of whatever, whatever it is. And I'm just, I'm just curious now for a, you know, being next to a furniture store, this is, I'm sure kind of a, um, a win-win. But are, are other businesses going to try to parlay this activity? I think that because if they're here for one place, I could see visitors stopping other places on, uh, in, while they're, while they're in the area.
Yeah. I know Ken Garf is hoping that when people come down from Idaho, they'll, uh, stop by and look at some cars while they're, uh, stopping in from either Wyoming or Idaho to visit the Trader Joe's. So, uh, hopefully it's massive. Hopefully we can get somebody in R.C. Willie Billy. I hope it, it generates some interest in that, you know, just the traffic alone. So, yeah. So, yeah, good point. Uh, okay. Uh, well, I don't have anything else. So with that, we would need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion of a second?
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.
That whole building, R.C. Willie, all the way down to Chuck E. Cheese's, it's a ghost town pretty much.